This conference will now be recorded.
The District Republic for which its statements, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all and welcome. If you don't like the weather, wait two minutes, it'll change. Change very quickly. So we have no speakers tonight to address the board, so we'll move right into the agenda. And the first three items are recommendations that are contained in a memorandum from Mike Oriselli. This has to do with replacing board members on our review board, Board of Appeals and Short Term Rental Board of Appeals. So we all have the, I believe you all have the Mike's email. He's proposing to, requesting that we appoint David Tenedo to the review board. I believe Mr. Tenedo is already served on another board. He's obviously, and I've heard good comments about his work. So I think we'll take these separately since they're all different boards. I'm happy to make the appointment based on Mike Oriselli's and the review board's recommendations of the appointment of David Tenedo to the review board. His appointment would be for a five-year term on that board. Move. Jason, Peter. Any discussion or comments on that one? If not, we'll call a vote on that one. All in favor? Any opposed? Mr. Tenedo should be congratulated. Review board does a ton of good work for our community. The second one we have is to replace the vacancy on the zoning board appeals. And the recommendation again, that and this will be replacing Charlie Roscoe, who's resigning after several years of service, would be Gary Calhoun back. And I think we all, colleagues, you call him back. As obviously some public interest, he ran for supervisor last year. So I think the folks have some knowledge of who he is, and I think he would be a good candidate for an appeals from right now. So I'm happy to, I'm happy to make that appointment and would ask for the board's support. Motion. Move. Jason, Peter. All in favor? Any opposed? Congratulations for your appointment. And the third one is the short-term rental board of appeals. It will be important. And here, the candidate, and I do not know Mr. Santa Cruz personally, although I've seen a letter and expressed some interest in what that board is about. So again, based upon the recommendation of the, of Mike's office, would offer the name of Christopher Santa Cruz to fill the vacancy on the short-term rental board of appeals. So, Jason, all in favor? Any opposed? What takes care of that? I'm also just...
Has the town approved these appointments?
I discussed this with the supervisor, and they either have or will be. I believe their meeting is tomorrow.
Okay, because I'm just reminding everybody that they have to be approved by both boards.
That's right. So our, our appointments are obviously contingent upon the town, but based upon what I've, what I've been advised by the supervisor, these are okay. There weren't a whole lot of, there wasn't a long, long list of applicants to pick from, so I think we appreciate that we got three. Next item is a request from the electric department to approve the attendance of our lineman at the 2021 NEWA Safety and Training Program, which is at a cost of, because we're a member, the cost of $1,860 per lineman for, for the, I guess in this case, because some of our, some of our, some of these six names are, are working up through the line schools. Total cost for 2021, $11,160 for the six candidates that would be eligible and will be training. And I would add that this is, this is required training for a lineman. It's part of the safety program. They're required to go through each year. Anyone have any further comments or discussion on that?
Second?
Okay. Motion, second on the floor. All in favor? Any opposed? We have an ad on vitamin D. Need to remind me tonight that we, we have an upcoming election on March 16th, and we need to appoint individuals to serve as election inspectors for that activity. The names that we have at this point, I believe there are four required, Nina?
It's not a requirement, but it's for the best, especially since we expect this to be a busier election again.
So if I understand you correctly from our conversation, you'd like to have authorization for up to four inspectors?
Yes.
Three of whom we have identified, those being Denise Brebrich, Rose Ben Warner, and Martha Bullock. And the fourth position is to be determined at this point.
Karen Angelopoulos offered her assistance if you need another individual.
Oh, okay. Okay. I will, I will probably be in touch with her then.
All right. So I'll, I'll text her and let her know.
Okay. That's great. Thank you.
So we have a motion authorizing the appointment of the inspectors as requested by, compensation at $12.50 per hour. All in favor? Any opposed? Because we can't have elections without those people.
No.
Mindy, do you have anything else in your book of ideas?
That's all.
Mindy, before I do the warrant, our affidavit for bills to be paid, do you have any other comments you want to offer this evening?
Uh, no, not tonight. I'm good.
I think everybody's looking out the window. In that case, then we'll move on. We have presented this evening affidavit number 14 of current budget year, representing bills to be paid of totaling $335,712.10. $182,834 of that is coming out of the general fund, $109,720 of the electric fund, $4,707 in water, and $19,800...
Give it to Peter first.
We have a motion, all in favor?
Come on, Devon.
All in favor? Any opposed? It's going to be paid. I have no items of new business, because anyone else have anything that wish to bring up as new business? If not, we'll just move on to the old business items. And again, the four items that are there are just there to remind us to keep ourselves up to date, since they're all ongoing projects. Main Street Reconstruction Project, the, I think I'd ask Peter to give us just a brief update on where we are on that.
We had a meeting on the 25th, reconstruction meeting with the contractor Kubricki, and what we were told is, is three major things that want to get done in the spring, from like Balustrades down to across from Ruthie's Run. We agree that all of that, the road is going to start going to fill Ruthie's Run, and the curb is going to go more to the west immediately, I think. That all that gets regraded. And then the storm, the first catch basin where the driveway was now on Balustrade, that gets picked up. So that storm drain gets brought all the way down to where fire retention is going to be at one main. And then they're going to start the water main across from High Peaks and the Lake House building. That's where the existing one is newish from 15, 20 years ago. And they're going to, they intend to do the entire water main all the way to the Olympic Center and do all the laterals this spring. But as far as, as far as digging the sidewalk, they want to do the sidewalk as well to cross from Ruthie's Run on the Hilton side, on the High Peak side, not on the lake side. And then they...
Is that what you're gonna do?
Yeah. In fact, I talked to Patty today from Cold Spring. They're going to start producing to get ready for the job this spring. So they want to have that section by the High Peaks finished already this spring, not the lakeside, just the other side. And then in the park, in One Main Street Park, they want to work all summer long to finish the park.
Mm-hmm.
All the fire retention gets put in this spring, all the digging, so they can pick up that water from Saranac Avenue. But then all, they want to finish it and work all summer on the park.
Okay. So where, where are we going to move? Brad, because this, this is what Brad was talking about, and he was talking about, there's not going to be any disruption with the parking there, they're going to park all, in the park...
There's very little parking right there.
I mean, beyond the workable area.
Well, there's, there's no, there's no disruption at all.
And then there's the equipment will be contained right in the footprint of the park.
All the big work, the big machines have begun this spring, and then once they do all the finished work, sure, excavators, small excavators at that point. And then they also want to dig where on the museum lot, they want to do the road going up to the top this spring as well, because they need all the bottom for fire retention.
Okay.
And then another request came in, they want to this summer do the fire retention bottom of the...
Municipal lot.
Which would take away, they say, a third of the parking lot for a period of months.
What, did they, they mention July, August, or?
Well, yeah, they're talking about July, March. So that's a, that's something that's on the table for discussion. One main open problem, because except the noise, it's better to have, yeah, it's better to have a, begun construction job, better to work on it than to leave it on, in a short summer lot.
Maybe we can ask Mindy. Mindy, for that period that they're asking for the, the summer, the footprint, can we get an idea of the revenue that is generated for the parking management of that component of the municipal lot, so we can kind of see what impact that's going to be, what fiscal impact that's going to be?
Exactly. A third of the income of the municipal lot, more, more or less.
Assuming it's 100% accurate. Yeah, but it would just, it'd be good to have a ballpark number, at least two, because essentially we're putting that onto the cost of the project, and just kind of make sure that we want to know. And it may have to be done, but it's, it'd be nice to kind of know that.
You may want to look back, when you do that comparison, look back to 19, because 20, remember, the Olympic Center had nothing going on, so the lower end of that lot last summer was sparsely.
Sure. And even if we do like a roll, like a three days or a three year average, in that case, the summer's well great, you know?
That's right. Well, we have, with one other, we have, we're going to have between the Olympic Center and the Village Projects and the hotel on Main Street, could be a lot of workers.
Yeah.
So I think Brad and I, we're talking about some sort of a displacement plan as we're doing this stuff, identifying places so that we can keep some kind of parking, even though it may not be the most convenient at one time or another.
And then here's another alternative, and it's, this is always something that we've had as a board thought about in the future, but starting to meter up our side.
To get some turnover?
Yes. And I hate, hate to phase that sort of component in, because the board is only a minute or a half, or a couple of years, but if we're going to move that, that may mitigate the fiscal impact, and it might help, in addition, it might help the turnover amount at the beach, providing more people opportunities to go.
And my belief is, if you were to do that, we would, we would pay stations, probably would have to move some out of the other parking lot anyway.
Yeah.
I think the power supplies were taken care of when they...
These are the hub power down. So I would highly recommend that we investigate that if we're considering...
Considering to move the meters from the municipal, first we have to case the other municipal.
Yeah.
We'll make that decision one of these years.
But I think the numbers that Mindy's...
Is this during here?
But, well, I'm just saying, if, if the number that Mindy produces, even if it's going home year by year, we're doing average, we see that it is a, we don't want to come away with less at this sort of, these times, to make sure that we're taking a hit on the budget, since this is the, the part of the revenue that's separated from tourism, as opposed to we don't have to put it on the back of the taxpayer's backs. If we just switch them over there, we, they're maybe, they're maybe a mixture of tourists and residents who want to park or go to the beach, but at least our budget's not going to take a hit for that and have the, if that makes any sense. I'm just thinking that we, we can defray some of the costs. We're not going to recruit maybe all of it, we can defray some of it.
I will, I would mention that the municipal lot's probably the cheapest lot that we have. So even when K&amp;M's in there, the, the revenue in that half or that portion of the lot isn't as much as it would have been in, say, the NBT lot.
Right, because, yeah, the other option, if that's not practical, would be if we want to create turnover there for Main Street, probably reduce our, our gear signs.
It's not ideal.
Not easy to manage, because we don't have the technology to manage it, so that would have to be a traffic control officer, in effect, going the old-fashioned way and marking the tires.
I just, I just think that would, it would help the taxpayers in the long run.
It's certainly been on the table, up and on over the years, we've looked at it, and when we put the underground electric in, we, we were thinking about prospect of that.
This can be a trial run, a pilot run for it to see how it works.
There's also the pipe, the existing pipe on Parkside, 30 inch, that was intended to pick up the overflow from this fire retention at the bottom of the municipal lot. That pipe will be dug as well, across the front of the post office, I believe, and all the way to where the new fire retention is. And a big catch basin is going to be at the bottom of Olympic fill, picking up all that water as well, going into that High Peak fire retention. So all that water that flies downhill, that's not going to happen.
That, that will be a huge improvement in stormwater, of that section.
So and then, this is about summer again, they said they want to be, so the pipe goes in this spring from Parkside to where the fire retention is going to be. So then they want to build in July the fire retention, and then when that's finished, they want to dig the pipe all the way to like in front of the, which is also...
In the parking lot?
In the, in the municipal lot.
Not sure.
Never in the road. We didn't, we didn't want to dig in the road in the summer. Through the municipal lot, so they're going to open up that parking that they took away for the pipes, the big, and, but they're going to be taking away parking later in summer, as they did. But that's only a trench, okay, with the pipes in the trench. That's more minor than that.
That all depends on...
Because the goal is to have that already, because then in the fall, they'll be digging the water from the catch basins, the new catch basins have to go somewhere. So if that was ready, then they could start doing the fire retention and all the catch basins in the street in fall. More efficient.
I, I can't...
We're definitely going to lose parking if we do, if we...
I, I, sorry. Yeah, I can't see going 110% behind that without having a place for the, an alternative site for the displaced parking and then...
Well, the problem is, West Valley, that's going to be taken up by this huge Olympic Center project.
And...
And the people in the, what's that called, how do you call it? The Longwood Housing Project, they're supposed to start this...
And that, by the way, is going to be, I understand, is going to be...
No, the other one.
...real coming out of the...
Lucy, the Regan project, because they're building, they're bringing fill from Regan side, the hillside, over to the Lucy side. And the Olympic Center is going to be taken, they're staging everything over there. So I don't think that's an option of parking.
Yeah, I, and that was always, I never thought of that as parking, in a sense, as overflow.
The other, the other issue is, we don't yet know for sure whether we'll have any, I mean, there's very minimal public transportation flowing through the area from, that's part of, would be, would be part of our Placid Express. And again, it's a COVID issue at the moment, but they are running some rural buses and on-call, but they're limiting the number of passengers to like four, types of passengers. But hopefully things will get better. I have a note on my pad to give Jim Duggan a call and just confirm whether or not there's any hope for any of that, because that would make a difference. We could be using the Stewart's lot a little bit more aggressively than we are, maybe take the, I don't know whether we take the permit space and just open it back up, because they're rarely used and they should be.
We have a reasonable permitting purchase, if we take away...
The railroading parking would be...
Yeah, railroad, railroad would be...
Under spots. Oh, I, yeah, like under the COVID sort of situation, that's, yeah. I, I think that once the employees, to the extent that did park for free on Parkside, they may be motivated to park down at the Stewart's component now and utilize those spots. And then if we do, we... I would advocate very much that we entertain that idea, talk to Brad and Mindy to see what the, what the impact is of moving the meters over and then letting the community know, and it's out of necessity. Otherwise, we have to, we have to cover for somehow a loss in revenue, or revenue in parking management.
Do we have a meters or tour parking signs?
Meters, because tour parking signs are just will not be enforced. It's a drastic step, but I just, this is the, what is the primary source that we generate revenue off tourism, so we can offset some of the issues in our budget?
All the way, all the way to the past.
We can just go over our parks, or we can circle around to the park, and that would be even better, in my mind.
You have the old meters on market?
Oh, no, existing meters, the ones from the, the one part of the, there's probably get two meters, probably, or three, on the lower side of the municipal lot. One, two, three. We have to do a little bit of walking, but...
And I've kind of taken a position on this, that we would not commit to anything along that line for, for two reasons. One, I'd like to have our Main Street focus group take a look at this, they represent numerous organizations in the community, and get their input on it. And we may, maybe we'll find some other solutions to the displacement. I think, I think we're ready, I don't think we're ready, those are just things that have been presented incorrectly. The contractor can, can probably carve, optimistically, maybe, six months off the third year of work if they can get a jump on it. I am, I am very impressed with the fact that they feel that they can have the entire water main in this season between post offices, they're making this, it's a lot of digging.
I think it's going to take some sacrifice on the villages part, but...
What they do, they put the entire line in, new water line in, and then they charge it, make sure it's disinfected, make sure it's no, no leaks, and then they cut it into laterals type. Seems efficient.
So, you know, look, you're looking at...
They said where the laterals go to the building, they're going to be pulling up the papers, existing papers, and they're just going to patch the pavement. It'll look like shit.
For now.
Just reality.
But just tell us, you really feel that? I have a feeling that if we were to present the proposal about taking up a third of the municipal lot without replacing it or making sort of, we might not get the most positive response. That's just my...
And we're sensitive to that, and again, I mean, I want to make sure the community is fully engaged in that discussion and understands what the benefit is of doing it versus not doing it. And again, you raised a couple of other issues that certainly would be side effects of doing something. So, and, and we don't know at this moment what the summer is going to look like, what you're booking, so like, Peter?
Nobody books anymore, really.
Okay.
They go later every year, especially the public.
So I, I'm inclined to believe that the summer will be similar to last summer. I don't see anything happening all that quickly that's going to, all the airlines are trying to get back on board, but they're not there yet. 777s, I've seen, is probably...
That's really the best number. And from what I, is, and I'm just getting into the sort of the bond, is it the 10-year that seems to be kind of impacting the market, even though it's like the yield going up, it just seems that, there seems to be some uncertainty now, but everyone seems to forecast that.
It should go down 20%. It's way over the limit.
Full market?
Yeah.
Oh, that's just...
All that free money is going to go somewhere, that free money, the people have saved out of...
So there's a lot of, a lot of people anticipating a lot of buying power, a lot of being unleashed. I have a feeling my class, it might be a result of that, so.
With the stimulus, they give people money. They're trying to pay me unemployment. They're trying to pay, I got to say, they want to give me $500 a week.
Because I have a feeling that...
At what point?
Me. Well, I have a feeling that has to do with the way you constructed your business and filed your taxes. I don't think, if they really dug deep, they probably wouldn't want to give another 1% of $500 a week.
The stimulus, it's one thing if they gave it to just unemployed people, they wanted to give the people, they've not lost anything.
Well, they want to put in, they don't want people to generally save it, they want people to spend it. If you, you know, 50% of the business, as they say, restaurants and bars are not going to reopen after. So like, if you can put money into the market, it goes into actual small businesses, it goes quite a bit of business.
You know, bring you on.
Anyway, all of that stuff is probably going to happen and so forth. That's, that's pretty much the latest information there. The land use code update, I don't think there's been any recent meeting, Gary?
There is, there's one tomorrow. The big thing that's happening is the Shoreowners Association, I think is going to be reached out. I think they're going to meet on the night. Whiteface in wants to meet with us to discuss what's possibly happening over there, and we're getting ready to set up, I think, in the next couple of months, public hearings. So it's finally starting to happen.
When you say the Shoreowners, are you talking about like Placenter, or like...
Like Shoreowners Association.
In connection with arts, arts information, the town and the village are looking to do a joint, this will be for a presentation from the steering committee for the two boards Thursday, April 8th at 4:00 PM.
I just want to break. And really, I don't see it all into the, the land of the short term that they...
We're, we're not on the short term route right now, we're on the other issues, but we're getting close to recommendations. And then the local government communication plan, the Main Street rollout is really a show for how, how well and what we can do as far as informing the public. It's the next step really in open government. And a lot of that is going into that. And also the joint website is, they'll be working on.
Have they, has the town moved to like?
Still aligning, still.
The town and village, taken, has asked, uh, us to consider a request for expressions of interest in submitting that for, uh, building a platform that both the town and the village websites would, uh, would operate. Uh, so there would be some similarity when, when a user goes there instead of having to go to different platforms that are out there now. Um, my sense from discussion with Jenny is, uh, and, and I know Janet, and I suspect Ron has reviewed it. It isn't committing the town or village to anything except creating a database of, of, uh, interest from companies that would be willing to work with us, out of which we would, um, eventually take, suspect the next step and request actual bids. But, uh, I, I, I think it's a cautious first step. I think that information may be needed just to figure out who's out there that we could be working with. A reasonable cost, or, well, yeah, and at this point, we're not committing any money. In fact, we're not even guaranteeing that we'll ever do anything, that, that caution is in there. Any other comments, Tiana, on that? I know you looked at it briefly.
I, I did review it and, uh, I thought it was very well prepared and it obligates us for nothing. It, you explained it, it's just a request for interest. But there are a lot of specifications in it, so a company would have to be, um, pretty well versed in, in, uh, this type of situation. And we'll just see, it's very clear that it's not even an R F P.
Okay. Anything else, uh, under those four items? If not, under mayor, um, a couple of things. I received a email notification today that the New York, from New York State Department of Transportation, that they're going to, they're notifying us of a project that they intend to commence on Route eighty six near the North Elba Wilmington Town Line, which is at the, uh, over at the notch on Wilmington Road. Um, they don't have a, they don't have a start date for it yet. They simply state that, as it discusses, the project is being designed, currently slated for two thousand twenty one construction, to make a series of improvements to the closed drainage systems at four locations serving Route eighty six. And those are all within a fifteen hundred foot strip along that, uh, notch. Um, they're, they anticipate using a single lane traffic daytime for the period that they're working. They'll have a, uh, temporary traffic signal system set up during daytime hours. And then they also suggest that there will be nighttime closures of the road between County Route twenty one, which is River Road, and the High Falls Forge. Can't face off, that one doesn't really make much sense to me. Once you get to the, why do they bring people all the way up there? I guess it's because of the, uh, summer business and the fact that they'll have to turn around and go back. If they, they, they're going to do the same thing they've done sometimes in the past. They're going to roof traffic at night, uh, around Upper Jay, Jay and Kane and seventy three. So this notice has gone out to a multitude of, uh, people, including several highway departments, fire departments, EMS departments, uh, supervisor's office, board of, Josh Babro at the school, the postmaster, Tim Dillon, County Parks and Public Works, and the public county transportation coordinator. So, uh, there'll be more information coming on this, but I thought we should get this. Just, just the fact that we have this notice, get it, get it into the records of people and be able to look at what's coming. One more thing to add to the projects that are going on this summer. The other item I have, uh, was requested by. I had a call from one of the reporters, the Enterprise, Sunday evening. I didn't have an answer for them, but asking if the village, Lake Placid, were going to, uh, do anything with respect to a resolution, uh, commemorating, uh, March first as COVID nineteen victims and survivors Memorial Day or just Memorial Day. Um, apparently there's roughly a hundred other cities and villages around the country that have done this. There is a resolution in front of, uh, the House of Representatives, acted on, to do with semi designation. I think we put a lot of, a lot of coverage into this. Most of it was precipitated by the actions in the villages, and that lady who have gone forward and done so. And, uh, I just wanted to get a sense of your interest in whether we want to join with our surrounding community and do something similar.
Sure. Yeah. I mean, we haven't had a lot of depth here, but everybody knows some of the patterns or series that owns, you know, neighboring areas. Come on for it.
Okay. We all agree we'll, we'll come up with an appropriate document to do that and we'll bring it to the next meeting. I'm not actually sure, it's going to be, it appears that March first is the preferred date. I actually thought last year when we saw that started, we were into the middle of March.
It was mid-March.
Wasn't it right around St. Patty's?
It was, yes.
That's one of the, that's where I really got to have, they were starting to talk about it.
That's when they shut down in March.
So it's something we can, we can do, I think it's. Other than that, uh, I also had just a brief note from Mike Gortaselli. Each year, the building department is required to file certain reports under New York State law Part twelve oh three for municipalities. It's due April first each year. Uh, Mike is just simply indicating that, uh, it's been done for this year. It's put together by Brett. The information that they provide, that is, uh, details, permits, inspections, enforcement actions that taken in the previous year. So I, I know I get this every year and, uh, I used to say, what are we doing with this? But Mike, uh, Mike has, I think the last two years has made sure that we've responded. Look at that, missionary reports, anything additional? I think, uh, one, one thing that I'll just mention, last night at ten o'clock, we had a, a very momentary power outage, Channel Five, which, uh, which I was, I was sitting watching TV and it went out. I looked out the window across the valley and realized all of a sudden that it was the entire village, it wasn't just the neighborhood. So I sent a message to Kim, just a text, asking him what was up and, uh, but initially, we, we thought it was a National Grid's transmission line. Uh, but in discussions today, Kim clarified that, uh, it has to do with a relay switch, uh, in the neighborhood of the Placid Commons. And maybe, uh, maybe a, a step that National Grid had not taken, like COVID, which of certain things from powers disrupted. So my, my purpose in asking Kimball was to ask him how well the, uh, revisions we made at substations responded, but the, the power was out, uh, I would say less than a minute. Came back on, so I just assumed that it was, you know, I actually thought maybe somebody hit a power pole or something. But anyway, that's, that's what it is, they're on top of it and crew was in the area looking to see what might be needed in the, uh, the Placid Commons area to, uh, correct any deficiency that might be there. So you may hear more about it. Then the other item I've got is, is a executive session discussion item. But before I ask for an exec sessions or anything else that anyone wishes to bring up, um, Elizabeth?
Uh, yeah, what is the status of the police reform package?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Police reform.
Where's the status?
Police reform.
Uh, I, I have seen a graph which is going to be, a date will be established shortly and that will be available for public review. Uh, that should be coming up in the next few days, I would say. I, I think, uh, the last I knew this morning, Chuck was giving it his, his second look through to make sure that it was nothing that we needed to amend or change. So, uh, that will be, that date will be announced shortly, Liz, I don't have it this evening.
Okay, and is there a date yet on the, uh, the second, uh, Main Street session?
Tentatively, I believe, I heard this afternoon at a work session for that committee that, uh, we're looking for, uh, March eighteenth. A lot of stuff going on around the middle of March.
Okay. And, uh.
I didn't know.
Okay. And, um, so, uh, it was my understanding from speaking with, uh, Eric Chapman, who, who heads the Can-Am tournament, that, uh, you and Supervisor Rand were consulted ahead of the, uh, the tournament, uh, this past weekend. Um, uh, knowing what you know about the pre-planning for this event, um, how do you think it went?
I had no information that there was any contrary event that occurred as a result of it. Uh, the supervisor and, uh, Butch Martin from the Park District and I met with Eric, uh, and, and his management team, uh, before the event last week. And the, and the purpose of it was to just, uh, reiterate the fact that, uh, we were going to be watching very closely from an administrative standpoint that they adhered to the plan that had been submitted under the state guidelines approved by our public health department. And, uh, it is represented what this, what the town and village boards had, uh, was comfortable, uh, supporting. So that's where we are. Uh, I had, I had no indications over the weekend of any, um, issues with respect to that. It was a very relatively small event this year by comparison. I think, uh, Peter, I heard twenty-two teams was the last count.
About twenty-five percent of what last year.
So about a quarter of what they ordinarily would have had and, uh, uh, again, those that were staying in the official hotel, uh, were, were, were following the hotel's, uh, guidelines with respect to that. No, uh, no events requiring, uh, or permitting any gatherings were, uh, were to be held. And I believe they adhered to that. So this year's event was pretty quiet. And, and hopefully a year from now, we'll get back to something more normal, but whatever that is, we don't know. But that's what we have, Liz, for that.
Did they finish the whole event on the lake or did they have to use the oval?
The final games, they didn't play, because Sunday was screened out, or I think they took the ice out.
Yeah, they did. That's, that's another good point. The, uh, the oval refrigeration is, I think you covered it, Liz, uh, last week, is down. So the oval is, uh, is preparing for, uh, the upgrades and construction that will take place over the next, uh, six months or so.
Right.
There was an interesting article, Liz, you, I think you, you posted it, showing the two big, uh, refrigeration units that were shut down that have been operating for forty years very regularly.
Right, oh yeah, I know what you're talking about. Um, I guess one other thing, uh, I wanted to ask about was, do you feel that the onus of kind of enforcing these, uh, best practices in terms of like public safety have been placed on local municipalities rather than, uh, other agencies?
It's, uh, it's been a partnership, Liz. Um, the state through its hotline, uh, forwards, uh, to each county, usually to the county sheriff's office, uh, any, any, uh, violations or complaints that they see. And then the county sheriff's office distributes those around the county as, as they see fit. We certainly see a fair number of them here in North Elba, uh, because, uh, a, a lot of times they're focused on gatherings or on, uh, dining rooms that are crowded or restaurant bar employees who are not adhering strictly to the COVID requirements. Those sort of things. Some of those, uh, if they involve an entity that, uh, is, is operating under a permit, are handed to the permitting agency, which sometimes is Department of Health. Uh, others are investigated by, uh, local law enforcement, and that would be our police department here in the case of Lake Placid. But, uh, I, no, I, I don't feel that they've been dumped on us. I think, uh, I think the responsibility has been, uh, has been shared, and I might say, uh, willingly. Certainly Department of Health has a number of properties here in Lake Placid that it, uh, issues permits, operating permits for, and, and they have stepped up and done their work. In other cases, uh, there may be a, a federal agency a couple of times that I've seen involved. And then, and then we have just the issue where we may send one of our police officers out just to do an observation. Uh, and sometimes, uh, uh, that will lead to further enforcement or, or at least encouragement for them to follow the best practices. That's the best answer I can give you at this point.
Okay. That's all I had for you, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Liz. Any, anybody else wish to speak before I ask for a motion to take the board into executive session? If not, I'll ask for a motion to, uh, move to executive session.
So move.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Okay, we're in executive session. Yeah, I'm recording it, what he, should just be the people at earth.